Again.
Call to order, the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting. Have the roll call, please.
Gloomer?
Here.
You Benedetto?
Here.
Whistler?
Here.
Poisey?
Here.
Olson?
Conley?
Here.
Gray?
Okay. Next, and we've got Kevin and Jeremy on, online, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Next item of business are the minutes of October ninth. Any comments, additions, or questions before I ask for a motion?
They looked really good. They looked good.
Theresa?
No, no one.
Yeah. I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve as written.
One second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
No, I, I like the way he, he did it to show who was virtual and who was present.
Yeah.
It was really good.
A roll call, please.
Gray? Conley?
Yes.
Olson? Poisey?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
You Benedetto?
Yes.
Gloomer?
I think I need to abstain because I wasn't here. I think that's the proper.
You, you're, you're allowed to, the guidance we have from Dan is you're allowed to vote for guidance, but if it's not a necessary vote, there's no problem with abstaining.
Yeah, but we got four, so it proves anyway.
Yeah.
Put me down as an abstain.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Communications from the board, Urban Renewal Agency, Jeff?
Um, met last Monday. Had a little bit of a discussion about RC and D has a grant available that we're kind of researching, getting a little bit more information on that would help fund planning and visioning process for the Urban Renewal District. That's an ongoing discussion. And talked a little bit about extending the U R D further up Brewery Hill to include the city-owned property top of the hill and decided to kind of wait and get some input and advice from the planner before we proceed or have a recommendation.
I mean, you and I had a brief discussion. Can we arrange for Jeremy or designate planner to attend some of these meetings so questions come up that, where they need some direction from Jeremy?
About the U R D meeting?
Yes.
Um, yes, that, that question did come up and, and we're, we're going to ask him for, for, for that, so.
So, and.
But they're not attending all of them, but they have a, a specific ask.
And, 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 and who makes the ask? Do you make the ask? So, the chairman of, of your committee needs to coordinate with the mayor to arrange for Jeremy to be there when you think you need him.
Sure.
Okay.
And that, and that was the discussion at that meeting?
I just wanted it a record.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sandy, council?
Yeah, um, the land use committee, standing committee meeting.
I'm sorry?
The land use, uh, standing committee meeting is going to talk about zoning in the city limits for RV parks.
Okay.
And I know that we have discussed them briefly, but they're going to be looking at them as well. The mayor did say that they're going to be printing, they're going to be painting hash marks on the corners out of a bump out so that they go out far enough that you can see around the parked cars. Probably won't be until next spring, but they're working on that.
And that'll be a no parking area?
Yes, because, you know, you can't park within, what, ten feet of the curb, but it would be a painted hash mark. People aren't going to park there.
Yeah.
Well, they still might, right?
But if they do, it'll be illegal.
Yeah, and, um, the admin committee is working on a good neighbor policy because when the short-term rental, um, whatever ordinance was passed, it says that there would be a short-term rental, um, I mean, a, a good neighbor policy, so they're, they are working on that. And the last thing is, we were looking at animal control, so I pulled up the municipal code and it says, which I kind of, since in some area requirements, it says that it's unlawful to maintain any horse, mule, colt, or goat within a radius of fifty feet of any dwelling. And goats are completely in here a lot, so I'm thinking that the committee needs to, yeah, change this and remove the word goats from all of this because it doesn't coincide with our zoning. Our zoning allows horses, um, mules, and foals, but no goats.
It allows them with a pretty serious set of conditions.
Serious conditions, but this keeps saying, it keeps throwing in the word goat in there as well.
It, does it differentiate between pet goats, for example, and the goats that come around in little herds and take care of the grass and then they move on to somewhere else?
Visiting goats. They don't live here. Those are visiting goats.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's a, it's a.
It is visiting goats.
Yeah, there was a herd coming down the alley one night and I was walking home.
Yeah, usually you don't see the herds in town.
We had one go by our street one time, but.
Yeah, they travel through here to go south of town.
But then they're gone.
When they eat nap weed and, and they defecate, it doesn't give the nap weed back again.
But the distinction is they're visiting, they're not being kept and living in town.
Right. The other thing that we were kind of toying around with is chickens are not allowed except for, for educational purposes, and the city council didn't seem to have any clear view on yay or nay, but that's just a conversation that came up.
We, we had a, I remember we had a pretty serious discussion about that a few years ago.
And we made them educational for, but people could say, you know, this teaches my children how to take care of animals and where the eggs come from. So, they're, they're educational chickens. Anyway, that's, that's.
Had to do more with carving out an exemption for the high school.
Exactly, exactly. That's why we made them for educational purposes. So, that's kind of loose as well. So, that's, that's kind of a quick overview that has to do with the planning board.
Questions with Sandy?
The only question I, or comment, I guess, has, has to do with the goats and I don't, whatever you come up with, I think you want to have enough flexibility to allow for goats to be used as a weed control.
Okay.
Function. And, you know, there's a lot of city-owned property up on the bench and elsewhere that's, that's vague and has weed issues that, where they could be used rather than utilizing chemical spray.
So, they could be temporary weed control animals, but not kept in the city. Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope. Oh, not for me.
I'm assuming that the RV park recommendation from land use or animal control recommendation from land use will end up in front of the planning board to incorporate in zoning or not?
Well, the municipal code needs to coincide with zoning, and the municipal code keeps bringing up goats, so probably won't have anything.
My question is, what, where does the planning board fall in this process when you discuss that, when it goes land use? Will it come to us before it goes to council, or what's the process there?
You're, you're looking at me. I think part of the discussion as they were going through and looking at stuff that was zoning code but not in ordinances.
Yeah.
Is that we probably have some stuff that's in zoning that ought to be in ordinances, and what would probably happen is it would be, uh, it is proposed that this be removed out of zoning because it actually applies to.
Okay.
To ordinances, and I think it would just be, uh, do you have thoughts or input?
So, be it administrative process to have zoning, uh, consistent with ordinances?
But, well, what do we have in zoning that belongs more accurately in, so zoning is about, Brian describes it a lot, this is up until it gets built.
Yeah.
And then once it gets built, this is, you know, then it's, then it's not a building inspector's job anymore. Then it becomes administrative. And so, I think, I think that's a fair distinction from the, from, so our zoning regulations are up until it gets built. After that, probably, you know, we need to look at it and say, does this need to be in ordinances instead of, meaning, once you get the ordinance in place, now you simultaneously, it's a two-part action. Here's an ordinance, it no longer needs to be in zoning.
I'm not trying to create work. All I'm saying is that this planning board has had lots of discussions and opinions on RV parks and lots of discussion and opinions on animal control.
Okay.
And somehow or another, I would like those opinions incorporated into any decisions that are made regard, concerning RV parks and.
And, and I think RV parks is one of those things that ultimately remains in zoning because it's, is it going to be or is it not going to be?
But we also got, was it three or four years ago where we had that big discussion about horses here on the corner and hoofed animals and all that kind of stuff? And there was a lot of a public input in those discussions and, and the, the zoning, the planning board came up with some language that is currently in there now, whether that needs to be updated, improved, changed, or whatever.
But if you, let's say that in zoning, we say no horses, and we have a horse. What's the penalty? What's the fine? Zoning doesn't have any fines, fines or penalties or enforcement or administrative elements.
But that could be said for all our zoning.
No, because it comes into play before you build it. You don't get to build it.
Yeah, but we have zoning violations now that aren't, that, that enforcement is a big issue. Am I not correct there?
That doesn't mean we remove, zoning regulations are set, and they're set for, what, five years?
Yeah.
Right? So, because you create an ordinance and somebody decides to change an ordinance, doesn't mean we go back and change the zoning regulation unless, you know, I mean, if it wants, if somebody in city council wants to change it and it's part of zoning regulations, it needs to be.
That's, that's where I'm coming from.
That, that, that.
We don't think they erase things because, you know.
No, the, the, the question was, is there stuff in zoning that be, that it's the wrong place to be in, in zoning?
Yeah.
And there was nothing specifically identified. It was like, that's a to-do list to go through and look at it.
Jeremy, do you have any input on this discussion?
I mean, I think you're on the right track. I mean, typically I see animal control stuff not in zoning. Typically, that's a separate animal control ordinance that, that governs what type of animals are allowed within the city limits. I, so I, I, I am of the opinion that I think you could take, but I don't think you lose what you have, right? I think you can just simply take what you have in the zoning and pass that along to the council to add that into an ordinance. And then when we, then when we revise your zoning regulations at some point in the, in the future, we would take that out so that it's only in the ordinance and not in the zoning. That makes sense.
I'm just saying.
And the problem with this, Al, is that the municipal code does not reflect what's in zoning.
Correct.
So, the municipal code needs to be changed to, to be the same as, and so that's something that's.
And that was, the big thing was, when it's in five different places, you have to modify it in five places. So, if it's something that belongs in one, then it's easier to have it in one.
This board needs to be part of the discussion.
Well, it's not for the goats, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, RV parks is another whole.
No, RV parks, to me, is something that's absolutely in zoning.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
So, RV parks, RV parks are also subdivisions, so just keep that in mind. That's part of subdivision review a, as well as can also be regulated by zoning.
Okay.
And frankly, I don't know why they want to bring up RV parks.
Yeah.
I just heard that it was going to be on the next agenda.
Yeah, I, I have a hint.
You have a hint?
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody's been working on the council.
It's, it's actually not, it's actually not the hint that you, it's, I, I'm aware of your hint, and it's, it's actually not that. What it had to do, I'll offer some more words, so it has to do, there's a camping ordinance that has come up, and it basically said, no camping in the public right of.
Right.
And then the question is, well, what if somebody comes through and they're tired and they need someplace to stay? The consensus was, or the, the feedback was, that's a valid need. That doesn't mean it's local government's job to fix it.
Right.
And so, do we allow for private citizens to provide for that need? So, that's the background behind that conversation.
Okay. Uh, Dave, can you give us an update on where we are with our assistant planner?
I can. So, um, he, uh, was late getting in to get his pre-hire paperwork done. We just got those results back today, so he will be filling out his onboarding paperwork tomorrow. He'll start out in, in the, that'll be my first opportunity meeting him. Alan Jeff have met him. They were in on the panel. But he starts out with Jeff, and so I would expect that he will be here at the next meeting when we get together in three weeks. This is one of those.
Yeah.
Fifth week, fifth Wednesday month, as well as the fifth Tuesday. So, he will be at that meeting. However, um, we, the, the goal is to definitely bring him up for success, so it's not like, it's not like, um, Greg is going to be bowing out immediately. It's not like Brian is going to be bowing out immediately, although there's a lot of stuff that that position will be taking on, um, that he will be doing. So, you'll see him, if nothing else, in the shadowing and, and easing him into those positions.
Well.
And what's his name?
His name is.
Kalen Renner, R E N N E R. Speaking on the behalf of the board, I've been really pleased and happy with Greg and what he's done for us and his cooperation and his involvement, and I'm hoping that he will be involved in transitioning this guy.
Absolutely.
And training him to meet our standards, if you know what I'm saying.
Greg has had that conversation. Kalen is not.
I'm sorry?
Greg's already aware of this because he and I have had this conversation multiple times. The new guy is not.
Okay.
He, I haven't spoken with him yet. Well, but like I said, the goal is, the, the, the goal is to transition successfully, not to, not to have any pain because we're switching.
No, and, and.
Yeah.
We, we have a process, and I hope that we can keep it.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions?
No, that sounds good.
Okay. All right, Jeremy, moving on to new business. You've had some conversations with the county planner. Can you bring us up to date as where we are and what the future might hold?
Yes, I was able to talk to Forrest this week based on our last planning board meeting. We had some discussions on, you know, what the best course of action would be to approach the county planning board about the, the, the future land use map that we're proposing with the growth policy. Forrest was of the opinion that the county planning board, that it would not be productive to provide, say, the, like workshop with them, where they would provide and mark up a map that shows what they want. He thought it would be more productive because there's only a few people on the planning board that are from the Red Lodge area or represent the Red Lodge area, and the rest are, you know, other parts of the county. And he thought those people would be more interested in it than other people from other parts of the county. And so, he thought the best course of action was actually to, um, present it to the planning board, the county planning board, get on their agenda, have somebody present the future land use map, explain why the city of Red Lodge is doing it, and then just ask them for comment. So, he thought that that would be the most productive method to get a comment from the planning. So, I guess with that in mind, um, we could request to get on the November planning board meeting. I think it's, I think you said it's the third Tuesday of the month, I think. Might have to verify that, but, uh. So, that'd be like the nineteenth of November, something like that. Where somebody would present that, uh, future land use map to the county planning board and make that explanation and then request comment for, you know, and have, and have them have discussion and, and comment on the map. So, um, that's kind of where it sits. I guess I'll put it back at the planning board on what you want to do and how you want to proceed. I think one thing, you know, we would want to discuss is who's going to do that, the presentation, right? You know, I don't know if the city wants to pay me to drive all the way over to, to do that, or, or Great West needs to do that presentation since they're the ones doing the growth policy, you know, or if that's Dave, or I don't know who that is, but I guess that's a discussion that we would need to have as well.
Yeah, Dave.
Jeremy, could you, um, for this group, um, share with me the information that you were able to chase down and find out on MCA seventy-six-one, six-oh-one, um, about kind of an updated as, as far as, uh, requirement versus not requirement?
Yeah, I, yeah, so at the last planning board meeting, we kind of talked on whether or not the future land use map was required by state law or if it was not necessarily required. So, I looked at the statute, the growth policy statute, and it is, it's listed under the city may. It's not a, the city must do. So, it's, it's a, the city may plan for, uh, growth and, and infrastructure development outside of its city limits, um, you know, through this, it doesn't specifically say future land use map, but it just says planning for growth and development, you know, adjacent to and outside the city limits. And so, it's not a requirement, so it's not a must-do, but it is a made, so it's a may-do. But I will reiterate, based on the last meetings, that I, I believe the future land use map is very important, not only for future land use decisions that will come in front of the planning board and city council, um, related to annexations, subdivision reviews that will come into the city, but also grant opportunities. Grant, each funding agencies want to see that communities are planning for growth and development, and the only way you do that is planning for future land use, right? And, and determining where your growth and development's going to be. And so, that's very important for infrastructure grants in, you know, moving forward into the future. So, um, with that, I guess that's all I had.
Okay, couple of thoughts.
Okay.
I, I think the person that needs to present this is you, uh, whether you do it virtually or in person, and with a representative of, of the planning board with you, whether you do it virtual, whether somebody from our planning board is also there, but, um, in my opinion, the presentation has to be made by, by you, whether it be in person or virtual. Okay?
I agree because he's a qualified planner.
Yeah, you're the planner.
You're, you're the one telling us, and so for us to pass it on, I'd rather get it from the horse's mouth as opposed to.
And I don't know if they have virtual attendance.
They, they have that capability.
They do.
So.
They do. Forrest, Forrest was of the opinion that it might be better off to be in person, um, to better explain and, and, you know, show the map and describe the map in person, but, you know, I, I could certainly keep, continue to work with him and, and figure out the best way to do that. Maybe if we have one person in attendance physically and then, then I'm also in attendance, uh, virtually, um, that might work, right?
Theresa?
I, I'd like to have the presentation contain a strong statement if what we're saying is that the planning board is behind this.
Yeah.
The city may and wants to.
Yeah.
A strong statement. If this isn't something we're just like, oh, wouldn't be nice. This is something we want to do, and I want to make sure we're all good with that.
Yeah.
And then the more of us that are there in person, the better.
Yeah.
And I would encourage.
But do you agree that the presentation has to be made by our planner?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it would be great. I mean, we could all comment as well and back them up, but, you know, for different reasons that we've discussed.
Well, I, I think given the sensitivity of the issue, I guess, it's a better, or potential controversy, I think, and, and this is kind of our first really formal engagement with the county planning board. My opinion is that, that Jeremy needs to be there in person.
Yeah.
I think this is one of those situations where being in person and face-to-face with, with the county planning board rather than a face on, on a screen is, is.
I, I agree. Mayor? Okay, noted. Did you all talk about other relationships, uh, between city and county planning? For example, I know in talking with Bill Bullock, there's subdivision issues we, we can share with each other, make sure we're on the same page, and those types of things, just to kind of coordinate future, um, discussion and issues, or did you just stay with land use?
For right now, he was, he's actually, he was actually in New Hampshire at a housing conference, um, so we just kept it to this future land use map, uh, for this discussion and, and how to best proceed with getting comment from the county planning board. But I, you know, I'll continue the conversation, right? I think when he gets back, I think we just continue coordinating, and, um, I think it's an ongoing discussion. Just, um, I don't think it would be a terrible idea to just have a, a monthly call with him where I, maybe we schedule, we block out fifteen minutes or something, uh, or half an hour every, once a month to just chat about what's going on in the city, what's going on in the county around Red Lodge, and, and just start coordinating that. And maybe that's not, maybe, maybe at some point when you transition this new person into, into it, maybe, maybe he takes on that. Um, you know, I can get it started. Maybe he takes on that role at some point, but maybe, I think that'd be good. I think that's what we do a lot in Helena, the Helena, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County and East Helena. We all have, you know, monthly check-ins and weekly, in quarterly meetings where we talk about land use issues and coordinating of, of those things. So, I don't think it would be a terrible idea to just schedule a call with him once a month and just, you know, get that coordination started.
I, I think, I think this would be a good first step and hopefully it'll go well, but I, I definitely think we need to improve the communication and cooperation between the two, the two boards. So, are we, we good there?
We're really happy that we're even as close to.
Yeah, yeah. Jeff, Susan?
Well, the only, I guess, question I had, you, you mentioned, Jeremy, about maybe, did I hear you right, maybe suggesting a, a subcommittee of the county planning board meeting with us, at, at least those members that were within or around the Red Lodge area to maybe to introduce or at least show them initially what we are thinking out as far as the future land use, or what was that conversation like?
So, no, Forrest, what we, what we settled on was just making a, a present, you know, getting on the formal county planning board agenda, uh, monthly agenda and making a presentation to the full county planning board, and just basically make that presentation and, and then solicit comment, right? So, they, maybe they don't provide comment necessarily right at that meeting, but they, you know, maybe we give them a week or two weeks to provide, you know, written comments to the city on what, you know, you know, what they want to do. But that, that would be the starting point anyway, at least start the discussion on it. I think the one thing we want to be careful of, this is. I think the one thing we want to be careful of, this is a city of Red Lodge document. It's not a county document, right? So just like any other public comment, we're just essentially, you're essentially just soliciting public comment. And you're trying to get those, uh, the planning, the county kind of on board with what you're planning to do. Um, but we don't want it to hold up the process either. So I think we want to be careful. On how long we let that go, I guess, and just, we want to keep things moving. So.
Okay, I think we're on the same page here and we've opened the door a bit and let's keep moving in this direction.
So would you like me to get this on the November planning, county planning board meeting for presentation?
I would like to get it on the agenda when you can be here. Depending on what you're.
That's what I was just going to say, if that scheduling works for you.
Should, that should work for me. I'll, I'll, I can make it work, so.
Okay, all right. And we're going to meet again before the nineteenth, so we'll, we'll decide i- if all of us are attending the meeting or a portion of us or whatever we.
I don't know if we should over.
No.
Yeah, I don't want to.
No, but.
Outnumber them.
You'll give us a recommendation on how many of us should attend, Jeremy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if, I think if three or four of you, well, I, I, I want to be careful not to have a quorum of the city. Red Lodge Planning Board, because then you'd have to notice a Red Lodge Planning Board meeting. Um, so I think we want to make sure. Yeah, I think two or three people should be good. Um, and then I think maybe if Dave can attend, that probably wouldn't be a terrible idea. Um, if he can, and then I'll be, and then Greg and I can be there.
If that's the, the latter part of November, I will not be able to depending. I, remind me the date you said again?
Nineteenth.
I think it's the third, I think it's the third Tuesday of the month, but I, I can ver- I'll verify that with Forrest. I'll send him an email tomorrow. And kind of tentatively get it on the planning board agenda for November and I'll, I'll verify the date and time.
The bottom line is two, no more than three of us will attend.
Yeah, a non-quorum.
Non-quorum, that's three.
And the nineteenth would work for me. I would be able to be there as well.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll send an email to Forrest tomorrow and. Get it tentatively on the November planning board meeting agenda then and verify date and time.
Okay, and, and again, I, just, just part of that con- conversation and being genuine. The, the conversation we had and where Jer- where Jeremy found our code and looked it up. Um, because we were all under the impression, at least the conversation that I remember, that this was a statutory.
Yeah.
And, and since we found that out, I mean, there's still a lot of good reasons to do it, but I want to be. Genuine and appropriate in our presentation.
And, and Jeremy, Jeremy would be responsible for that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeremy. Okay, moving to old business. Kevin, thank you for your patience. Uh, where are we on the downtown master plan?
This time, I actually don't have an update. I reached out to Jim and Chad today and I have not heard anything back. Uh, Chad was out of the office. I don't know where Jim was at. What I will probably do is have them either relay to me an update and I can send it out to the board and to Jeremy and Greg. Uh, tomorrow, assuming that I hear back from them, or I'll just have one of them reach out to the board directly. But unfortunately, I don't have anything right now.
They can reach out to Greg. And then Greg will, Greg will distribute accordingly. And copy Jeremy. Or vice versa, reach out to Jeremy and copy Greg or Greg and copy Jeremy. They, they then will distribute per our procedure. Is that right, Greg?
Yes, that's the Greg then.
Um. Okay, uh, so, I mean, they talked about having a draft at the latter part of the month, and so. I'm hopeful that we can accomplish that because once we get that draft. Um, we're going to spend some time. Uh, Jeremy and Greg will make some recommendations and the board will review as well, so. Okay, anything else on that, Jeremy, that we should ask?
Uh, nope, I think Kevin covered it.
Okay. Well, Kevin, I'm sorry to have you here for no report.
That's what it is. That's all right.
Well, he still needs to be here for the growth policy discussion anyways, so.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's go to the growth policy and um. Having talked with uh, Jeff from the last meeting, uh, Jeremy, do you want to take the lead on this, please?
Yes, sir.
We're going to review the, we're going to review the land use map and some other things.
Yep, let me share my screen so that it's up. Okay. All right, so uh, per uh, planning board comment and discussion last meeting, uh, we revised this to. Uh, square this planning area boundary off, I should say Great West did, um, and then um. Uh, primed all the proposed land uses outside the city limits down into that planning area boundary, so that we're within that one mile buffer. Um, I think that'll help to eliminate some confusion. Uh, I, I see us potentially getting, especially from the planning board, comments on, you know, why are we outside of our one mile buffer zone and. You know, with our, with our planning and all that sort of stuff. So I think this, I think this cleans it up. Um, I think this looks really clean, in my opinion. Um, with the squared off planning area boundary around the city. Um, I don't have any really further comments on this map. I, I think it looks for a draft. Future land use map and planning area boundary, I think this looks pretty clean, so. Um, I'll open it up to the planning board for any further comments or discussion.
Uh, Teresa?
I'm just wondering if it helps to present this by just changing the title of it alone, just call it a. City-county cooperative land use and planning area map. Instead of future land use and planning map. Future land use.
How about potential?
Well, future land use makes it sound like, yeah, we're, we're pla- this is our plan for the future, right? So you just call it a cooperative land use and planning area.
Or proposed?
Yeah, well.
Uh, I, I guess my only concern is I don't think we want to put the county in there because this is a city of Red Lodge growth policy document. So I don't think we want to reference the county in it. Um, but.
Right there, you're saying city of Red Lodge, Carbon County, I can't, well, so you could read it either way, but. What about just saying cooperative land use and planning area map? Because this, you want the cooperation within those miles on each side buffers, right? You, that's what it's all about is a cooperative. Area that you're representing.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's a good uh, a good add. I don't, I don't.
Either cooperative or proposed, either one of those words I think would work.
Uh, cooperative, like, I think I, I treat, you know, Teresa's point, I, I, I think is that. You know, we're hoping, you know, that this is the cooperative area. You know, outside of the city of Red Lodge where the, where the city and the county cooperate on future land use and planning. And so I think by just adding at the top of that, that title, just cooperative, future land use and planning area or something, I think that works.
Jeff, you okay with that?
Yeah, that sounds, sounds good, good. But future would still be in there because that's.
Yeah.
Part of the, the Montana code.
Oh, okay.
Correct, yeah. We still want to call it future land use map because we're planning for the future, right? This is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, this is what we want this, the city to look like in twenty years, right? Um, as, as we. So it is a future land use map, so I think we keep future in there.
Yeah, and at the very least, if, if they read the first word and the last word, they see cooperative area, that's it.
Okay.
It's a cooperative area.
Any other comments on the map?
I was just gonna maybe ask a question. You know, we. We have low density areas greater than five acres and then medium density, one to five acres, and I'm wondering. In order to just better define the land use a little bit better. Then we just jump to open space and agricultural land without any, any criterion. I'm wondering if. If we need, need to have another category in there that's uh. That's greater than twenty acres is agricultural or something. I'm just trying to put some, some boundaries in terms or definition to what we mean when we say low density, medium density. Agricultural, open space, because I, I look at this map and I see, you know, some of the area that. That's identified as low air, low density, there's actually some pretty large parcels in there that are probably. You know, greater than ten or twenty acres.
So I guess my, I guess, I, in my opinion, so open space agricultural land is typically. As far as land use goes is there's no development, right? So you don't have, it's not meant for. I mean, where you could, you could have somebody build a single family farmhouse or something on it, right? It's not really meant for, um, you know, residential, commercial or any of those things. It's, it's what it me- it, it's what it says, open space agricultural. Whereas when we say residential, it's expected to be, you know, that's residential property. And so you're going to have that resident, residential use associated with it. Um, and then it doesn't mean that a low density residential lot that's five acres or more. Can't have an agricultural use associated with it, right? You could s- you, if it's outside the city limits. It can be, it can have horses and stuff. Once it's in the city limits, then it's subject to the city's ordinances. Um, but does that make sense? I, I don't know that, I mean, we can certainly add that in there. I don't know that it, it adds anything to it.
I noticed on the Dillon map, they call it open slash ag slash vacant. And they love those altogether.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, vacant, I mean, because some of these could have, I think, I mean, if you zoom in on this, I think we do have some development on some of these though. Like, it looks like there's some buildings here. You know, I think you do have some, I think you do have some, some residential type. You know, construction on some of these lots, so I, I don't, I don't know. I, I think, I don't, I wouldn't say vacant. Um, because again, you're talking about future land use. I don't necessarily think you want these to state, to be vacant. I think you want some kind of open space or ag use on them, right? Not just vacant land. And so I, I, I would say no, but that's just my recommendation.
All right, any other questions? Jeremy, I have one here. This one mile buffer zone, um. Should we clarify and reference that on this map as to what that is? Uh, is it a statute? Is it a code? Um, is it? Reference that, you know, we're just not an arbitrary one mile. Do we, do we, do we have a reference? That states that the one mile out of city limits is kind of a cooperative zone?
Well, so I mean, the map will say cooperative future land use and planning area, so I think we answered with the title change. Um, I think the appropriate place to address the administrative. Uh, purpose of the one mile buffers in the growth policy text itself, not necessarily on this map. Um, so I think that's something that, that Kevin should probably app, app, you know, make sure is. Included in that future land use section of the growth policy. Um, is to a description of, you know, why a mile, you know, and that's.
But is that mile arbitrary to Red Lodge or is that typical around the state?
Yes, that's pretty typical around the state and what it, what it relates to is in subdivision statute. Um, there's a one mile buffer requirement or one mile planning area requirement around cities. Where the county has to cooperate with planning. Uh, so if a subdivision is proposed within that one mile buffer around the city, they have to submit that subdivision application to the city for comment. Now, it doesn't mean the city, it doesn't mean the city reviews the subdivision application and, and reviews it, approves it or denies it, right? They just simply submit it to the city for comment. Um, so that's what that one mile is, is associated with.
I understand that. What I want to make sure is the county understands. Why that's there and, and, and what the references to it, and so. The, it, you don't think we ought to reference that on this map as, as, as per. MCA whatever or whatever code it is that says it's a one mile cooperative zone?
Well, I think for right now, I think I can just, I think I can just explain that when I make the presentation. Um, I, I, I think that's more appropriate to be in the text of the growth policy, not necessarily on this map.
But, okay, for my. Ease of mind, we're referencing a certain document, are we not? For this one mile?
Yes, and I can work with Kevin. I'll work with Kevin to make sure that that, 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 the text of the growth policy documents where that one mile comes from.
Uh, but you don't think it, you don't think it ought to be referenced on this map?
You could say, oh, no, it should say approximate one mile.
Okay.
They have that on all of these, approximate one mile planning area.
Yeah, but my question is, I guess I'm not making myself clear. My question is this. So the county or somebody looks at this and says. Okay, where do they get that one mile from? Why, why is it one mile? Why isn't it two miles? Why isn't it half a mile? Why isn't it zero? And we're following a guideline statute, something that says it's one mile.
But that could be in the text and it refers to this map. This is going into the growth policy as well, right?
Yes.
So it could be in the text describing the map and say that.
I get that.
You know, by guideline of MCA.
I get that. But I'm just looking at this map and I, and. Should I say refer to growth policy page, whatever here?
You want to be in the growth policy.
Yes.
At, at Al's point, if I pick up a book and I'm thumbing through it and I see a map, I read the little paragraph underneath it and I don't go reading three pages before and after to see if it's cross-referenced or mentioned.
He just wanted to say it, it, this map is a provision of MCA, whatever.
The one mile, yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Were given provision to create this.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, but I'm not getting a lot of support.
All right, I, I can work with Kevin. I can work with Kevin and we'll try to get some, we'll try to put some text on here that, that. Describes where that one mile buffer is. And I, and I do agree that we should put approximate one mile. Um, and, and I, I think instead of saying buffer, we should say approximate one mile planning area boundary on there probably. Um.
And I'm not operating in a vacuum here. I've had this discussion with, with the county commissioner and he's asked me a couple of times. I've told him a couple of times, but he keeps asking me, what, where do we get the one mile?
Okay, I, I'll work with Kevin. We'll get some text on here that, that.
Yeah.
That.
Okay.
References.
All right.
Where that comes from.
My point's made.
From the professionals. MCA provision.
Yeah. All right.
We, we. We have some room to put it on. We could, if we had to cover up this space, we could put text right here. Um, that, that kind of describes.
I just put it, I'd put it above the scale. That's where I'd put it, but.
Well, I, we'll just see how, we'll see how much room we need.
All right. I made my point. All right, any other things on this map?
Well, I was just gonna, on that low density residential, I, where we say greater than five acres, I'm just wondering if we need to have an upper boundary to that. Say it twenty acres or so.
Oh, I see, five to twenty. Right here is in between five and twenty acres.
Yeah, between five and twenty, rather than greater than five.
Are we going to go back and omit the parcels that are greater than twenty acres?
What?
Well, then we'd have to go back to the map and omit any of them that are above twenty acres. There are parcels that are above.
Anything greater than that would fall to ag land or open.
Right, right. So we'd have to go back and revise this map. Some of these are greater than twenty acres.
Well, no, no, because this is a future land use map, so you're, you're, you're saying, I mean, it is related to existing land use, but you're also saying, okay, in this area, we want. To keep it low density between five and twenty acres. So I don't think you necessarily have to go back and. I don't think we necessarily have to go back and reclassify stuff.
Yeah. I like having that.
We, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Jeff?
No, that, that's it, but it was just, yeah, you could, I mean, it's a D I S query, basically, but.
Well, we don't need to remove them. That's a good point that.
Susan, do you have anything?
It's not the, that's what we want.
Teresa, are you okay with this now?
Yeah, yeah.
Dandy?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Although I did have a question whether or not the cemetery is in the city limits.
It is not.
It's in the county?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next map you want to talk about, Jeremy, is what?
I think we got the perks and trails map. Um, yeah, it was updated, uh, per comments. I think Teresa did send us some additional comments today. Uh, those were forwarded to Kevin. Um, I don't know if the rest of the planning board got those comments or not, but Teresa did provide some comments uh, as to, uh, some, some missing things on here. Uh, but I think overall, the, the, uh, most comments were drastic, so, and except for some of the things Teresa, Teresa asked for, uh, the dog park and some other things that she commented on.
I, it's, I'm actually compiling a list from all the different sources as well. I was not aware Teresa was doing it. We may be duplicating some efforts, but I got the list from the parks board and pardon?
Well, I got the list. Uh, uh, we'll compare notes.
If you would send it on, I can get, I can get it from these guys too, so.
Now, the, now, the list that you are compiling, is it dedicated and undedicated?
It, 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 yeah, I'll, I'll sit, and I'm just looking at parks.
Yeah.
So I also saw in a former document, oh, actually, I borrowed from Get, Getlach, right? We had the growth policy. Non-dedicated, comma, developed parks, dedicated, comma, undeveloped parks. We talked about the spires land that was supposedly dedicated, but it's only a part of a PUDS test right now. It's not developed and it's not dedicated by the city. It's a subdivision dedication, which is different.
It's a designated park, not a, not a, a dedicated park, I think was the wording we came up with last time.
Subdivision, because of the subdivision. So that shouldn't be showing up here at a dedicated park in this map. Or it could be.
Well, I, I think it, well, I think i- it's still a park. Just because it's not dedicated to the city doesn't mean it's not a park. So it was required parkland for the spire subdivision, even though it's, it's in the ownership of their, you know, whatever HOA or whatever's, whatever entity owns that right now, it's still dedicated for park use.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to look at this and say, oh, I can go use that park. No, they can't. It's not developed.
Um, I don't, I, I guess I don't know enough history on the spires. I, so in my opinion, any park land that's dedicated or, or set aside by subdivision review is a public, is pu- for public use. It's not for just use of people who live in the subdivision. That's not the intent of the subdivision and planning act.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it is not developed. So can we say dedicated undeveloped parks versus dedicated?
And I'm confused, but that, that is used as a park on a daily basis.
By who?
Me sometimes, and every time up there, I see thirty other people.
Which park we talking about?
It doesn't have a name. It's not dedicated.
It's, it's Moran Park, and it is a list, and it does have a name, and it is there. It has a trail, it has signs. It has enough dog crap that people aren't picking up after themselves when they go out there, but clearly they.
One at a time, please.
The last planning board meeting we had, you said it was not dedicated, so please.
It's not a dedicated park.
Dedicated.
But it's still a park. But you said developed, and it's not in use. And I'm saying it is in use. That's all I'm saying.
It's not dedicated.
Okay.
We need to agree on our categories, is all I'm getting at.
Time out.
You can't just say everything's.
Their professional opinion was that we include it, whether it's dedicated as parkland or not.
Right. So what if we, instead of even saying dedicated or undedicated, what if we just say park? And I, I guess it, it depends on what you guys want, right? I mean, different communities handle this differently, and it depends on how detailed you wanna get, right? And so I, I've seen communities just say, you know what? We just wanna show where parks are. Like, right? We're just basically providing inventory of our park facilities. Whether they're dedicated or undedicated, we're just saying, these are the available parks within our community, right? And it's just simply an inventory. I've seen some places go, like you're talking about, where they show, okay, what's, what's debt, you know, dedicate or developed, what's undeveloped, right? Those sorts of things.
Doesn't matter.
It, it's really up to you, but, I mean, for some political purposes, um, I, just calling them parks and not even designating whether they're dedicated or undedicated, cause they're public use. Regardless, um, then I think that, that satisfies that, but maybe not.
No, no, hang on here. All right. So what is the general consensus now? Just all parks, whether they're dedicated or undedicated, Jeff?
Well, that sounds more encompassing than just having, than saying.
So just, if it's a park, it's a park. Susan?
If it's a park, it's a park.
I think a park, I, I think it's, it's confusing with all of these breakouts.
So a, a park?
It's a park.
I think it, it's fine as a park, but the city ought to update its website to list all the parks that you're intending to show on.
Let's get this map right first.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so.
I have one more question. Rocky Fork and what is going to end up having to be a park, correct? Same with Eagles Nest?
It is not going to have to be a park. That is the most, it's gonna be open space, but I believe it will be a park.
So should that be included on this map?
That's the question I have.
Eventually, yes.
On this version, should it be included?
I, I think you can, because the city owns it now. I, I think we go ahead and put it on there, uh, because the city does own it.
I agree.
So that would be the Rocky Fork and, and if Eagles Nest gets to that point, then we'll.
Then we'll update the map.
We'll update the map.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, Kevin, or Jeremy, just to be clear, is we're not gonna differentiate between dedicated and undedicated park. It's gonna, if it's a park owned, publicly owned land by the city, it'll be on this map.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just change that to park. And, and Kevin, I would even take off P one, whatever, in, in parentheses. I'd take that out of there. Just call it park. Just that, we'll just call it that, and then add the Rocky Fork property in there.
That becomes a very useful map.
And, and to the, the comment earlier, it does need to be up on the, updated on the city website, which is why I'm going back through all of James's versions and, and the historical ones that did list all of those.
But before you update the website, let's get this map right.
I think they're one in the same.
Well, they should be, but this makes sure, he's gonna have to add some, uh, parks onto this map.
Yep.
Yeah, I think once we, once you get this updated, then I think, Dave, you could basically just take this right out of the growth policy and just put it on your website.
Just copy this map?
Yeah, even if this isn't done and adopted yet, it's the document, it's the reference, so.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. I kinda liked that, kinda headed where I wanted to head there. So all parks, city-owned land is gonna be on here.
It's gonna include the Rocky Fork.
Yes.
We will include Rocky Fork on there.
Yeah, especially within the next.
Okay, are we clear on that, Jeremy?
Yep, I think we got it.
And, and, and there's no changes on the trails? The trails are good?
I think so. I haven't, I don't know if Teresa had.
Teresa's shaking her head.
Could we have a separate map for trails? I, I think it would be more useful to people that are, wanna hike around here, not to have it all together encoded. I'd like to just see a trails map. And I suspect that the board is that, is that the trails people have a trails map already. We don't have to reinvent it.
Well, we got this map where we told that the trail, uh, Verge Trails Group hasn't seen it yet, so they might have updates.
I just didn't want it combined. I didn't want it to be combined with parks.
I think it's okay together.
Yeah, I think it's okay too. The only part is that you don't see the trails really well in the dark green. That's the only issue. Can we brighten that up in the, in the trails that are in the dark green? Can we brighten that up so they can see them better?
We, we do that. Yeah, Kevin, Kevin can, I'm sure tweak those, tweak those colors and, and stuff to see if we can get that to pop a little bit better.
The trails that are not in, in the park area show up very well, but the trails within the park area don't show up very well.
It should be red. A nice, broader.
You can just partially just increase the size of the.
Yeah.
Lines.
Yeah, the font.
Yeah, the line, yeah.
Just, you know what I'm saying, Jeremy? So it pops out a little better.
Yep, we'll, we'll work with Kevin on, on trying to get that, get that to pop a little bit better.
Okay, Sam, can you do that?
Yeah.
All right.
The only other suggestion I have is the green, you know, the designation, that those greens are so close that I'd suggest a different color for public use buildings than, than light green. So that they stand out a little bit different than, than the green for the parks.
Go back to the text that they had. I think pink was used in the earlier version.
A more contrasting color between public buildings and, and parks? Jeremy?
Blue, red, and green.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can, we can come up with a good color for that.
Okay.
Usually we see pu- public building stuff in like a pink color or something like that, so we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a color, color for that.
And it's, at some point, if we haven't done so already, uh, Vertooth, uh, they've changed their name, Vertooth Trails, needs to look at this. How, how do we make that happen?
Get in touch with either, um,
Nick?
John Clayton is the, that's it. He's not the most in charge, um.
Nick is Nick Gaddy in charge.
Nick is the most in charge.
Nick Gaddy is the executive director for.
Okay, do we have his contact information?
We do. I was actually working with him on the parks one, but.
Okay, and, and who's gonna get him a copy of this map?
When we, when we have it ready to do, we'll have, we'll have Greg send it over to Nick.
Shouldn't we do it before we finalize it, in case we missed a trail?
If, if we think we're ready, yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Well, Nick and Josh Walton are supposed to look at it because.
Jeremy, can you do that, or should we do that?
Uh, I think Greg can do that. Dave, Dave kinda indicated Greg could send that over.
Greg, can you do that for us?
Let's have Greg coordinate that.
I get that information to Jeremy and Kevin, and so.
Yep.
Before you guys are done talking about it, the email will already be done.
I, I really think that, uh, John and, and who's the other guy?
Nick.
Nick, oughta take a look at this.
Yeah, Nick's in charge, but John has been working specifically on the trails for longer than Nick has.
Okay.
So the two of us.
There's some trails, I noticed you have some trails in spires. Um, there's a trail over at the island of Rock Creek that's not on here. Is that not on here because it's in a, uh, and spires is a private subdivision.
I, I think the comment earlier is it needs to be on here. And as I said, our inventory.
There's, there's a trail, um, over at the island of Rock Creek that goes up along the pond and across the base of the, of the east bench and, and comes out. Well, it was originally supposed to hook up to the high school, but it's not. But there's another trail there. Um, I think John Clayton, uh, uh, Nick would know about that, so hopefully they'll get that.
Coal miners trails are basically, you know, uh, there, there was a bike uh, trail through there that has been eliminated because of the soccer field development and not come back. And there was a lot of erosion, and I, I don't know if those trails on the backside of Coal Miners are still current or what's gonna happen to those, but they're gonna have to.
I was on that one trail long ago, the one that goes down along the creek.
Yeah, but I thought somebody was looking at changing those along with D.
That'll have to come from John or Nick.
We'll have to talk to trails, yeah. I don't think there's anything we can do about it.
All right, Greg, I'll put that on you, okay?
Yep, sounds good.
Yeah.
If we're done with trails, are we done with trails?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, the high school wasn't shown as public use, but elementary and over.
Say again?
High school wasn't shown as a public use building, as public use. And there is a trail that goes through the high school over to the right of the football field.
Yeah.
It has been moved a little bit from what it was to begin with, cause when they put in the artificial dirt, they had to move some things around, but it's still up there.
Okay, so we'll get the trails finalized with those guys. Now, what was your comment about the high school?
The high school is a public use building, just like they highlighted, uh, uh, middle school and elementary school.
Did you get that, Jeremy? The high school?
Yep, Kevin, Kevin's not, has said that he got it, so.
Okay.
And then if, uh, the buildings at the ball field are public use, represented public use.
You talking about the dugouts?
Well, they're highlighted here. I don't know. Who, who, who owns the map? Who owns the buildings? But they're public use buildings, right? For the ball field, and they're represented that way.
Well, I would say ball fields would fall under a park, not, not entirely a building. A building's gonna be like a, you know, this, the town hall, um, or city hall, you know, schools, that sort of thing. But I would say ball field would fall under a park.
So what are these, what are these, uh, green square, light green squares inside Coal Miners by the side of the park? Aren't those part of the public use buildings for the ball field?
But isn't this the high school right here?
Yeah, but it's not highlighted, green, light green.
Well, is, let me ask a, a question. Is the gazebo listed as a building, or is it just Lions Park?
The gazebo I added, I said should be shown as a public use facility too, public use structure building.
See, I think that we're going too far from this whole public use.
That's why I'm asking, right?
Yeah, I, 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 I think the gazebo is just a structure in a park. I, I think you're, I, I don't think you wanna show the gazebo as this public building. It's not a building. Um, it's just a structure in a park. I would, I would say that's just a park. Just same thing with the ball fields. That's just a, a park. It's not a building. Um, and, and when you, when I classify a building, it's a, it's a, it's a structure, a significant structure, right? Like city hall, the county courthouse, uh, schools, like those sorts of things. That's a, that's a buil- public use building.
So then what, what are these green rectangles on the side of Coal Miners? Because then if, if you're gonna say those are, they're showing now as public buildings.
And, and what he said is they shouldn't be. They're, they're just.
That's why I'm asking.
Okay, we'll, we'll go back, we'll go back through it with Kevin, and we'll, we'll make sure that everything's properly shown.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, we can't get too small. I know that.
No, yeah, if it's in a public park, it's a public.
But the high school definitely needs to be.
Yeah.
And did we put the city pool as a park? Because that is a dedicated city park.
Yes.
I think that's everything I had. And double ditched.
Any other questions on, uh, comments on this map? Jeff? Sue?
No.
Teresa?
Good. I'm fine.
All right, are we clear on where we're headed here, Jeremy?
Yep, we got some more work to do on this one.
Okay. Will we get another version for our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. According to my notes, that's it for maps, right?
I believe so, yes. So I think we're back to the actual growth policy text.
Yep, is it starting on page thirty-six, future land use?
Yeah, I, I got thirty-five on my version, but yeah.
The heading of the land use.
Correct. Future land use, so.
You want to take us the lead through that?
There's, there's a couple other maps that were sent out to us. I don't know if they're.
We had ten maps.
Those are sampled.
No, not, not the examples, but like historic districts and places. Uh, the, the wetlands map, um, are we gonna take a look at those as well, or?
I don't know that there, if there were any comments sent to them on any of those.
I had comments a long time ago.
I think Teresa had a few comments on, on those. I don't know that anybody else sent comments on those other maps. But I know there, I did see some comments from Teresa on those other maps.
And you, and you put those in place?
I know Kevin got those comments, I'm pretty sure. I don't know if they've been updated. Uh, he might be waiting for the, to, when he puts together the final draft to, to, you know, have those updated maps available. I, I, we haven't seen updated maps, I don't think, yet.
So, so I've got, I've got some questions and, and corrections for the wetlands map. You want me just to make a note on those and, and send them to you?
Yeah, let's just, yeah, let's just do that. If you could just put them in an email and, or mark them up and send them via email to Greg and myself. And we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that they get to Kevin, and we'll, we'll make sure that those make it into the final draft. That, I think that would go for any, any of the planning board members. Um, if you have any, any comments on those other maps, um, just get those to Greg and I, and we'll, we'll forward those to Kevin and and we'll make sure those changes are made.
You mean like the sewer ponds that are, um, called freshwater ponds? Is that the, is that the, the type of comment you'd like?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you see some. Yeah, I mean, if you see something like that, it, you know, just, yeah, we comment on it, and we'll, we'll make sure we update to the appropriate.
You know what the source is for this particular version of the map?
For which one?
I was, I was looking at. I was, I was looking at the, uh, wetland, uh, triparian map that's at the Montana Natural Heritage Program doing as part of their wetland inventory.
Yeah, I, I guess I defer Kevin on the source, though, is, is usually the, the national or state wetlands inventory, GIS information.
I believe that we're using the national, but I could double check, while you're, while you're continuing to talk, I can double check through the, um, uh, metadata and see what it says on there, just to confirm.
All right, well, I'll, I'll send you my corrections or what I think is, what, what's missing.
Can you copy us those?
Yeah.
Thanks, okay. To make sure the board members know.
Yep, I think that'll be the most efficient to try to get, so we can keep going through them, then. So hopefully we can get through this, and, and we can give Kevin direction to get the, the final draft put together, so we can get that back in front of the planning board here.
I, I noticed the ones, the comments that I sent way back when you took care of, so. Okay.
Did we make a decision last, I can't remember what we decided last week, last meeting on the airport map? Did we, I think there was quite a bit of discussion about that, but I don't recall what we, uh.
We, we decided to take it out. And we're just gonna re- we're gonna just reference the, the, uh, airport affected area, um, stuff that, that, that the airport's currently working on.
So there'll be no airport map?
Correct, we'll just have a reference in the growth policy to the airport affected area regulations.
There, there is no airport affected area.
Well, I think, I think what we, I think how we worded it was future airport affected area regulations, or something like that, um, is how we worded it.
Well, they're eliminating the map, so.
But we do have paths, have trails up there, and an observatory.
The airport affected area, which is what this looks like, was what was, this map that showed up for the growth policy appears as the drafted airport affected area that was presented to the planning board by Lance. Was it two years ago now, a year and a half ago, whenever? But the planning board said that there wouldn't be an affected area. It wasn't required for airport FAA grant eligibility. And basically, it, 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 it just, there would have to be all kinds of things set up for that. There's no such thing as an airport proximity map regarding state legislation or FAA. That was just like a made up name. But if that turns out to be an airport affected area within the master plan, there's a lot of work behind that. There has to be a board of adjustment specific to the airport affected area. There has to be or, um, uh, ordinances written and hearings. There has to be all kinds of things that are addressed. And if, if the airport board is planning on having that happen, that through the master plan introduction, that's a lot of work. It's not something that could just willy-nilly be slipped into our growth policy.
So we.
So we're gonna take this out of the growth policy.
We're taking it out of the growth policy, and we're just gonna say that the airport is, uh, work in progress. Is that correct?
Well, we're just not gonna do the map.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna do the map. I, I thought we had said at the last meeting, we were gonna refer it, we were just gonna reference a future airport master planner. I can't remember how we worded it. Dave, do you remember how we worded that?
That, that sounds right, but the minutes would indicate, I would think.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is, I don't have the minutes right here, but is just reference that the, the airport discussion, planning is, is a work in progress, and leave it at that.
Yep, we'll, we'll, we'll play with the wording. We'll play with the wording. We'll get it. We'll get it right.
We were having discussion on whether the runway protection zone should be included for personal planning. At the very least, and I don't think we had a determination on that. Well, we have a section in the zoning requ- about the RTZ. Right, but is it accurate? That's the question. I, does it, is this something we need to revisit in coordination with? We talked about revisiting it, because the professionals were the ones who gave us that, but we heard that the cone was going to be widened. And, um, and that's something that's gonna have to come from publicly, Lance.
Yeah, what.
Remember that, the RTZ?
I wasn't at the last meeting, Jeff.
This was a, a while back.
Well, it has to do with Johnson's.
Claim, correct.
Johnson's proposal to build housing at the end of the runway,
Yeah.
which would have been within the runway protection zone, which would have impacted the airport's ability to, to qualify for FAA funding.
Correct.
Okay, it's my understanding we've.
We allow them.
My, it's my understanding we've missed that window for them to qualify for funding, and they have to wait another five or six years. Is that right?
That is not right.
So they can still qualify for funding?
It just takes four or five years.
The, the, the master plan is still in development, and there, there's not a missed window. It's still.
I'm sorry?
The master plan is still in development. There's not a missed window. There is, that, I think what you may have heard or something in that, before you get chunks of money, like before they would come in and rebuild it, you're probably five years out before you make it to the top of the list.
Because it's.
So that's a five or six year window.
Okay.
Because it's federal, it takes a while.
All right, but right now I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. We can't put in our growth policy any definitions or maps or whatever till we have the plan.
Until after it's been adopted and maybe exists, correct?
And, and so.
And you, and you don't want something in the growth policy that's gonna be in conflict with that future plan either, right?
Absolutely.
That's why we want a reference.
So, we need to have some wording in the growth policy that states we haven't been able to include it because it's a work in progress, and then when it is completed, we'll put it in as an addendum.
Is, is there a way to include a draft copy of it? To Jeff's point, we kinda wanna plan accordingly. Is there a way to put it in there, but in, but specify that it is a draft that is not adopted yet?
Well, I mean, they, the, but you, if it's in the growth policy, then you're adopting it as part of the growth policy. So if that map changes, then it's in conflict with what you've adopted in the growth policy.
I would, I would rather just say it's a work in progress, and, and once it's completed, we'll add it as an addendum to the growth policy.
I, I don't even think you add it as an addendum to the growth policy, because if that changes, then you gotta change your growth policy. I think you just simply reference it. And then if it's referenced in the growth policy, then somebody can just go to that document if they need some information on airport affected area.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, that's better.
I said it again. There is no airport affected area.
Say again?
Or master plan map, or whatever you wanna call it. I'm just used to airport affected areas, so that's, sorry, that's just my, my.
You can't, two people talking at once, I can't get it. So go ahead and finish, Jeremy.
Uh, I, it, it's fine. We'll call it master planners. I'm just used to airport affected area regulations and that wording, and so that's why I use it. But, uh, we can just call it master plan.
In progress.
Right, so.
Airport master plan.
In, in progress.
Okay, so going into the future land use map section of the growth policy, let's, let's start getting into this here, 'cause we're getting late.
Okay, wait a minute. Are you okay now?
I'll see you in the final draft, draft.
Yeah.
I'll revisit it in my.
Okay, let's move ahead.
Okay, so we're under future land use. Um, I think Jeff's first comment here, um, was, you know, talking about how we deal with development outside the city boundary. I believe we've addressed that, Jeff, with our discussions on this future land use map. So I think we're, I think we're covered there, um, but I guess, correct me if I'm wrong.
Where, where are you, Jeremy?
The second paragraph. Under, under future land use. It's highlighted in red. And you say given potential development outside the city boundary.
I don't like that paragraph at all.
Yeah, we, uh, I will work with Kevin, and I already had notes to work with Kevin to reword this a little bit, but, 'cause I, I don't like that first sentence that we're Red Lodge planning jurisdiction, 'cause the Red Lodge does not have any jurisdiction over the planning area. Um, and so we, we, we need to, we need to tweak this paragraph, um, and es- especially the extraterritorial zoning. Uh, we, we wanna get rid of all references to zoning this area and all that stuff. So we'll, what, we're gonna, I'll work with Kevin. We're gonna completely tweak this, this paragraph.
And we're talking about the paragraph highlighted in red on your screen, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll work on that wording, because there's some stuff in here we don't, we don't wanna say we're doing.
That's okay.
Just gonna upset people. And that's not what we're, our intent is. We're not intending to zone that. We're not intending to exert control over that area, that planning area boundary, uh, outside the city limits. So we wanna make that clear right here. So we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
Uh, all right, so getting down, it looks like there's a comment on medium density residential. Jeff just had a comment on adding accessory dwelling units in here. Um, I, yeah, I think we could actually add that to, to any of these, um, residential, right? So I think I would, I would add those to low density, medium density, and high density residential. Just add that.
Okay.
EDU as a, as a use. Um, so these other ones, I think what we wanna do here, so these, these ones follow our future land use map that we've, um, I think we changed this one to open space ag, and then we have a commercial district in here. But then we take the rest of these out, because these other ones relate more to your zoning, which we are trying to get away from relating it to your zoning designations. So I think we just, we have a, we'll, we'll take this public land, and we'll change it to, uh, open space agricultural, and then we'll have a commercial. Um, we'll pro- you know, just a, a commercial zone essentially, and we'll kinda combine these, uh, uses into that one, that one. So it matches, we want this section to match the future land use map designations essentially.
Okay, so you're taking out, you're taking out community entrance and, and all that stuff?
Yep, so we'll take out community entrance, central business transition, and central business. And we'll just add in commercial, right, to match the future land use map. And then we'll, 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 we're, we'll actually take out public land, and we'll have an open space ag section in here.
Okay.
That will, uh, describe that, 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 that land use, so. Okay?
Uh, I don't know if I agree with that. Um, I think, I think that those designations as community entrances and, uh, it, it's disting- distinguishing that from the central business district, I think is, is really important when we start thinking about future land use and how we want the, 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 the community to, to grow. I mean, those, those designations really help guide what ultimately ended up in, in our zoning code years ago. And so I, I, I think it's important to have these designations in here. There are special parts of the community. They're specifically different, um, and just to sort of generalize them into this sort of a generalized description of, uh, I, I don't think is.
Well, I think, I think we, I think we make these subcategories of commercial then, because the problem is, is we want this, this land use designation to match your fu- future land use map, right? So that, that, the whole point is that this section matches our future land use map. And so we have to, this is where you describe those, those designations have on your, right?
Oh.
And so, so we could put a commercial in here, and then we could have these as subcategories under commercial, right?
So, so this, so what I'm hearing is, all this narrative is in the wrong place. If you, if you're talking about future land use as basically being tied back to the future land use map, then these designations really are appropriate, or have been historically within the city limits, not part of the future land use map.
And he said.
Uh, I mean, these, these could go up to, these could go up into the, um, I mean, we, you have, you have some of this stuff already up in your land use section. Um, it looks like community entrances, central business district, um, some of that stuff is already up in your current stuff.
Yeah, that, that's current existing land use, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yep, so before this is all of our, your current existing land stuff.
Maybe it's a duplicate then.
Apparently that is a holdover from the twenty twenty growth policy.
Yeah, so it's, if, just to get clear in my mind, we're talking, when we talk about future land use in this section, we're really talking about the area outside the city limits. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Mostly, yes.
Okay, then I agree with what you were saying. I just don't wanna lose, um, these characterizations of current land use within the city, and if that.
And he said he was gonna put that someplace. I thought he said he was gonna put it under the commercial. Did I hear you right, Jeremy?
Well, I mean, if you wanted to keep these, if you wanted to keep these as, uh, ideas for what could be in the commercial zone in the future land use map area, um, we could make these just subcat-, you know, have a commercial category, 'cause that's what our future land use map says, but then have these as subcategories within the commercial zone, or the commercial area, not zone, um, if that makes sense, so, um. Or, or I think what Jeff is saying too, though, is we already have a lot of this information up in existing land use section before future land use. So I think this is kind of repeating what we already have. Um, but I, what I can do is, is work with Kevin, and, and we can review this against what's in the, the, the existing land use section, and make sure that we're, everything's covered.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's all I'm saying is, yeah. If it's, if these sections are covered under the, the, and, and starting in page thirty-one or whatever page is under land use, then that's appropriate. But doesn't necessarily be, they don't necessarily need to be repeated here under the future land use.
Okay, all right, well, we'll, we'll, let's proceed to that.
Unless there's some rationale for sort of breaking out, like you were suggesting there is to some subcategor- commercial.
Yeah, I don't think so unless you're actually gonna designate on the future land use map where you want these things outside the city limits, which I think then we're dialing it in a little tighter than we want to for a planning document. Um, I, I think as long as this is, this is described up in the, 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 the land use section previous to future land use, then, um, I think we're covered. I would just, I think we just need to have a commercial section in here that describes, you know, mix of uses, and basically kind of taking this community entrance section and calling it commercial, right? Because that's really what we're talking about, is that we're talking about the entrances into the city of Red Lodge, um, right, on, on, on the north and the south. So we're talking about, uh, community entrances, uh, outside the current city limits along the highway. And so that would be this community entrance section essentially. So I think we could almost just take this and call it commercial. Um, and then, and, and then I think we're good.
Okay.
Yep, the only question I have is the section on the north entrance along Highway two twelve from Highway seventy-eight to the two mile bridge, where the east side of two twelve is actually in the county and part of the future land use. But we have specific designations within, on the city side of that, that provides direction on how we would like to see that community entrance developed in the future. So I, I understand we don't wanna get prescriptive with that, but.
Well, so that's where, that's where if we just call those areas commercial, the future land use map, then when somebody comes in for annexation, and, and you're zoning that property as part of an annexation process, that's when you're gonna dial that stuff in, right? It's during that process, not necessarily at this point in a growth policy.
Okay.
So if you just call, in the growth policy, if you just call that commercial. So if you just call, in the growth policy, you just call that commercial, right? Then a- anything you do past that, you're actually doing in compliance with the growth policy because you just said, we want this to be commercial. Now, when you zone it, um, when somebody annexes it in, you're, you're zo- you're zoning it in compliance with the growth policy, but you can get more specific in that actual annexation and zoning process than what, you don't have to dial that in with the growth policy.
Would it be better to have it as a sort of a mixed commercial resi- mixed commercial residential? Cause that's really, that's really what the current direction is in our growth policy. It isn't just commercial. It's, it's mixed use or mixed commercial residential. And what we're trying, what we've been trying to do is, is encourage development, if it's commercial, then it also accommodates residential use as well. Or, or having it basically mixed use rather than just say commercial, which implies that there's no residential part of that.
So, so if you read this community entrance section right here, it says, "An area for mixed uses, including healthcare, residential, office, retail and industrial uses" that are more urban in character. So I think that answers your question. That, that allows for that residential, commercial, mixed use.
Okay.
I think that we should stick with community entrance because what we're talking about is perhaps extending our community entrance. And we already have a definition in zoning as to what community entrance is. So now calling it commercial, I agree, implies no residential or mixed use. I think we need to stick with community entrance.
Well, then we need to, we need to update the zo- the future land use map then to say community entrance and not commercial.
I agree.
Teresa?
I had a comment that, um, in this future community entrance, uh, I don't know how everybody feels about industrial, but we, we've been considering light industrial and not heavy industrial coming into Red Lodge, right? Stuff for U R D and all kinds of things. We've always defined light industrial, not, not industrial. So could we add light?
We could say, we could say light industrial uses here in that first sentence.
Wherever it says industrial, because we're not equipped for heavy industrial.
Okay, let's go back. I thought we were done with the land use map, but did I hear we're gonna make a change now for Sandy's comment?
I think what she, what, what she recommended is we change the designation on the future land use map that says commercial. We change that to community entrance.
Are we okay with that?
As long as that's true. Uh, we know we have some commercials off of, um, what is it? Willow Creek Road or is it Red Lodge Creek Road? And that's truly commercial, not community entrance. The community entrance is along the highways coming into town.
Yeah, they, they put another, they put another entrance on the side road as well, but you can.
Yeah, there, there are some areas that are definitely commercial, like Alpha Pepsi Drive. That is not a community, it's really a commercial.
I, 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 my recommendation is to keep a commercial on the future land use map. Call this commercial. Under here, you're defining what, what, what you want to see in commercial and that's a mix of uses including healthcare, residential, office, retail and light industrial. I, I, just because it says commercial on the map, this is what defines commercial and what you're looking for in that area on the future land use map. So I think, I think we're getting bogged down a little bit in this community entrance, commercial, right? Uh, you're, you're zoning, I, your zoning has the community entrance stuff in it. We, I don't think we need to start splitting out what's commercial over here, what's community entrance. Now we're getting very specific and I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. Okay.
We define it here, I think you're, we're just defining the commercial as a mix of uses, including all of these things. Then, then I think if somebody proposes that as they annex into the city, then whatever you then zone it would fit into that category, right, of uses and, and I think you're, you're good. Cause then you're gonna dial it in at that process, not this process.
Can we move on to subdivision regulations review?
Yep, um.
Annexation, is next.
Annexation, right, okay. Annexation, I didn't see any changes there.
No, I mean, that's pretty standard. This annexation language, uh, indicates that there, there is an annexation policy. Um, and, you know, annexations just need to be consistent with zoning, subdivision, flood plan regulations, all those good things. So this is kind of just standard annexation language.
So the next session that I saw some comments on was subdivision regulations in review.
Yep, so we're down in subdivision regulations in review. Looks like we have so, yeah, so, uh, Jeff, uh, just so to your comment here, this is directly out of Montana code. These are the primary review criteria for subdivision review. Um, all this stuff is defined in Montana code. So we, I guess we can't really, because it's defined in Montana code, we can't really expand upon that, if that makes sense. Uh, we're really limited to what the Montana code says when it comes to subdivision review.
So the definition for wildlife habitat in Montana code is a place or type of site where wildlife naturally lives and grows? That's the definition?
Yes.
Pretty general.
I mean, it's, I mean, and it's kind of intentionally broad. I mean, I think it's intentionally broad, right? Um, so it, it.
Based on my re- recent experience.
The whole town.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, so unless Montana code changes, this is basically what, yeah, this is, this is how we have to review. So, so basically this section is you, you have to have a section. It's required by the growth policy statute. And this is a requirement that you have a section that talks about subdivision regulations and review of subdivisions. Because we have to review subdivisions in compliance with the growth policy. And so essentially what you're doing is you're taking all those definitions and all those requirements of Montana code and you're just putting them into your growth policy so that you're reviewing that subdivision in compliance with the re- review criteria in your growth policy, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So these are all directly out of basically M C A. So there's really no, there's really no changes we can make to these. Um, except for, uh, yeah, I mean, there's, this is really what we have to review for subdivisions. Now, when you, we get out, down into some of these ones, uh, evaluation criteria, um, these are some extra things that you can put in your growth policy. For instance, um, you ha- you know, that says, you know, this is how we want to review this, this criteria. For instance, you, in here you have, you know, an average of one and a half school age children per lot. So you've defined in here that if a sub, when a subdivision comes in, they're going to say, you know, they're gonna say that each lot is going to have an average of one and a half kids per lot. So you could define that impact to the schools, right? Um, and so these evaluation criteria are, are more expanded, um, when it comes to what, how you're gonna evaluate each one of those primary criteria. So there is a more, a little more flexibility in this evaluation criteria.
So did you address Jeff's water rights question then? Under evaluation criteria for effects on agricultural water user facilities?
So again, again, uh, so those are actually defined in M C A, um, as, as it's actually listed here on how water rights are, are dealt with. Um, typically, typically what, how we deal with water rights is, especially when they're coming into a city, is we deal with that in the annexation process more than we deal with it in the subdivision process. Cause in the subdivision process, all it says in Montana code is that you have to um, define if you have water rights and if you have water rights, how are you gonna dispose of those water rights? Are you gonna, are you gonna distribute those amongst all of the lots or are you going to keep the water rights yourself? Under annexation, we can require the developer to actually give the water rights to the city of Red Lodge. Right? And so that's under annexation is how we would, how we would deal with water rights.
And I'm familiar that that's how we've done it in the past and we discovered that we had somebody who had not done that yet. So that'll be part of their application and said that it needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, they agreed to do it. They just.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yep, and so that's, uh, that should be outlined in your annexation policy. And at some point, if, when we get to review of your annexation policy and, and some revisions, we'll, we'll verify that that's actually outlined in the annexation policy and appropriate outlined, but that'll be, that's that, that'll be that annexation discussion.
If we annex, uh, a current subdivision, do we have to provide water and sewer? Have to.
Yeah, I would think.
Yes. So under Montana code, you have to, if, if it's within the city limits, you have to provide service. Now, it, it, it doesn't define what service means, right? So different places define what service means. A lot of places now, because they don't have the funds to put in infrastructure, they say, well, we have the capacity to provide service, right? But you have to put the infrastructure in. So that's kind of how the way this, the lot of communities in Montana have been going with that is that if you're in the city limits, we have the capacity to provide you service. But we have no requirement to actually run water and sewer mains and, and services to your lot, right? So that would be on them to have to put in the infrastructure to provide service.
The reason I ask is there are two subdivisions outside the city limits that currently have city sewer. If we were to annex them, would we have to provide water?
You would have to provide capacity. You, you would have to provide capacity for water, but you do not have to provide the water main extensions. So when they come in for annexation, unless you forcibly annex them, um, if they petition to annex the city, one of the requirements that they would have potentially for annexation is to put in the water mains to service the lot. Um, but it's kind of, so annexation is kind of a weird, it's kind of a weird gray area. There's a lot of flexibility in annexation. So if, if those lots currently have wells and they're provided with city, their, their own water and the council and the planning board are okay with that situation and they, you just want to get them annexed in so that you, they, they start paying city property taxes and those sorts of things, then that, that's certainly in your purview. You, you, it's, there's no requirement that they have to be on city water uh, to annex them in, um, i- if that makes sense.
Good. It doesn't, I think, I think some of the, I'm sorry.
Can we move on? So we can try to get through the.
Yep, so that, I mean, that's a future discussion on annexation policy. I think we can hit, uh, later on.
Uh, evaluation criteria for upon local services, that doesn't make sense to me, but anyway, um, I only, I only saw a couple comments there. I think you addressed them all.
Except it says approximately, how much will the subdivision increase agency cost? What is that, with the agency? Why the term agency?
Well, it says, I mean, it, it defines agencies up above. It says, "Which agencies will provide law enforcement, terror protection, and ambient service?" Sorry. Did you hear me?
Yeah.
So I, I think agencies are, uh, local, you know, uh, emergency services.
Okay.
Okay. Sue had a comment, a clarification. I think you got that right and comment corrected, okay.
Okay, so I think we're good there. Um, going down through here, I don't see any other comments.
I don't see, I don't see anything.
So we're down in local services. Um, looks like there's a comment. Um.
Where are you, um?
So we're down on local services, so my page forty-three, um.
Oh, wait a minute. You went past public hearing procedures and subdivisions. We didn't have anything in there.
I didn't see any comments in there, no. I, I kind of just skipped down through if I didn't see any comments.
And so on local services, we had quite a few changes in there, so go ahead.
Uh, well, I think, it looks like Kevin kind of responded to that, um, and said he sent it to the fire department multiple times and not heard back. So I don't know, I guess, how would be the best way to handle this.
Jeremy, if I may, I actually also sent that one more time out, uh, to the fire department, EMS again today. Still have not heard anything back. I don't know if that's somebody, somebody in the city should go out and try to get the information from them. Maybe they're just not responding to, to me because they don't know who I am, but, uh.
Did you, who did you just send it to? Did you send it to Tom Coontz?
Did, I can pull it up. Let's see. I sent it to a variety of people. I sent it to Tom Coontz, Amy Highfield, Tim Ryan, Torsten Proll and, uh, John, and I can't remember John's last name.
Um.
That sounds like.
He's the search and rescue guy.
If you afford it to me, I'll follow up with Tom.
You will? The mayor will follow up.
If, if you afford that to me, sir, I can follow up with them.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so I think we covered that. Um, we got, uh, Billings Clinic, Health Clinic. I didn't see comments there. Police Department, I didn't see comments. Library.
The next place I had comments was under museum.
Yep, okay. Uh, do we need to mention Arts Guild? I don't know, do we? Uh, is that part of the museum or what is the Arts Guild, I guess?
That's basically an art museum.
It's an art museum.
Okay, is that, is that a public or is that a private museum? What, how, what's?
It's private, isn't it? Huh?
It's a nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit.
Okay, alright, yeah, we can, we, we can work with Kevin and get that, uh, um, we can get that, uh, some information on that added in.
Put it as a separate heading?
Uh, well, we could probably just put it as a separate paragraph under museums.
Okay.
Yep, we'll just make it as some paragraph.
It's actually owned by city of Red Lodge, the building is.
Okay.
Um, looks like we got nineteen seventy-four.
Wait a minute, I have a question. I have a question, uh.
Backing up to library services, so there's, there's some things that are very too specific in here, like, uh, libraries open to public Tuesdays, Fridays, pending, that's already cha- I mean, it changes with the board. And it could change within five years, so it, it's really not necessary to put that in there, is it? Um, I had a comment that I submitted, it said, uh, changes possibly year by year depending on stats, status of staff and following discussions of the board. But perhaps it's enough to represent, it's open between thirty-four to seven, thirty-seven hours per week. You know, with pending board decisions. It's just not, I mean, this is a growth policy. You don't need all this detail in there, right?
I don't think you need to say when it's open.
Right, I mean, it's, it's, this is a very verbose.
She's saying it's too detailed and needs to be more general, Kevin.
Yeah, we don't need to know how many employees it is.
I can, I can get that updated. I actually was provided that information from the library, but we can edit it down.
I guess, yeah. But it's just, we could, in, in comparison to everything else that's mentioned, it's a little bit too much.
So Kevin, you're gonna, uh, K- Kevin, does that, are you the one that's gonna update that?
Yep, I can get it edited down. That shouldn't be too hard. Like I said, I, that's just what the library sent me.
Yeah, be more general and less specific, which is redundant.
Our full people library open.
Yeah. Okay, can we move on here?
Yep, so it looks like Kevin's updated the, uh, the other comments under museums, so I think we're good there. Um, he, he updated nineteen seventy-four in Carvin County. So I think we're good there. I think we'll add that, the guild in there and, uh, that should be it for museums. So I think the next place we gotta comment is community events and entertainment section.
Yeah, we just missed specifically Black Canyon Bistro. Because there are a lot of places in Red Lodge.
Right.
That have live music. So calling out one i- is silly.
So, yeah, Jeff, Jeff said at various restaurants, pubs and bars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's appropriate. So I think that's, that's appropriate, so we'll make that change.
Okay.
Okay, uh, senior services.
Uh, can we, can, can I add a comment?
What?
Yep.
I have limit for community events and I.
Okay, go ahead.
Move on, I'm just trying to say. Um, there's one sentence that says the challenges Red Lodge faces are providing events, entertainment for young families and attracting visitors during the shoulder season. We've had a development since this was written, right? So I, I'm putting a plug in. The latest opening of a public observatory in spring two, twenty twenty-four provides family-friendly and visitor-sky watching opportunities year-round. So that fills the gap that they're talking about, but, and then, but other attractions are still needed. I mean, that's an example of what we're looking for in a growth policy, right? It says the challenges Red Lodge faces are providing these other events, but here's an example of one that has been added. And is it an example of what more could be, you know, the type of thing that could be added? If it's a growth policy.
Do we need, if we mention one, do we have to mention them all?
All of what?
All of the things that have been added, he just says.
Well, what else has been added for fam- for?
Challenges faces of providing events, entertainment for young.
Give some examples of what, you know, this is a growth policy, right?
Wildlife Sanctuary is open in the, in the, uh, shoulder season.
Right.
I don't know if we need to be, it's not mentioned at all, I haven't seen it in here at all.
Is the downtown master plan is gonna kind of address this issue too? So maybe this would be an appropriate spot to reference the downtown master plan?
You're not downtown thing. If the challenges to our, our community, our growth policy is looking for ways to fill the shoulder season. What are some of the things that have been happening that we could serve as, could serve as example? For where we need to head and the community, right?
I think we should just leave the sentence the way it is. That, cause there is a challenge that Red Lodge faces, which is, doesn't mean it hasn't been met. But it is a challenge and everybody is working at that challenge.
You could have examples, the observatory and the wildlife sanctuary.
Provide examples everywhere else.
So you think they ought to be in there?
Well, that's, as, as examples, and it's not a exclusive list or, or inclusive list. It's just saying, for example, here's some facilities or activities that.
Are year-round.
That provide, uh, for.
Entertainment during shoulder season. And yet further attractions or entertainment are still needed, right, the year-round.
Do you guys wanna, do you guys wanna put together a list of those things and send them to us and we'll get, get them added in here?
Well, I don't think it needs to be an exhaustive list, I think just the two, as, just as an example. Otherwise it'll get too long.
Yeah, that's my point, is if you put in two, somebody's gonna say, well, why didn't you include me? That's, that's, if, if you're gonna include one, you need to include them all, that's what I'm thinking.
Either send him a copy of Destination Red Lodge.
Yeah. I, I think it needs to be general, um.
I mean, we, we could make a general statement that, um, there are, uh, you know, businesses and, and, um, uh, groups that have, um, you know, recently, you know, started, um, businesses or, or, I don't, I, that, that are, are meet, are, are working to meet this need. Uh, but more, more of this is needed, or something like that. We, I can work with Kevin with a more of a general statement, if that's what you would like to see in there.
I, I think a general statement is, is good and, and. My opinion is if we mention one, we need to mention them all.
And we're still gonna miss something.
And, and, and all may be incomplete tomorrow.
Yeah, it could be incomplete.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll come up with some, Kevin, make a note, please, that we'll, on this section, we'll add some general language in here that there is some work that has been done on this recently and that, but more is needed, so.
Okay.
I guess I just kinda go back up in that previous sentence, we said such as Festival of Nations. And then, uh, referencing to the.
Arts Guild.
Light music, or, you know, music.
Arts Guild, yeah.
Champion Rodeo.
But it's just large scale.
Fun, fun-run charities, yeah.
Large-scale events. And we know that, and we know that we have large-scale events. We haven't even mentioned the movie theater, talked about events, how about the Roman? I mean, it keeps coming and.
The Historic Roman Theater provides Hollywood entertainment.
Yeah, yeah, and that's in the shoulder season, yeah.
So we have it down, shoulder season.
You know.
You see where we're going, it, this is getting weird. I, I like, I like that we point out that the challenge is getting more events and entertainment during the shoulder season.
Okay, let's do this. Um, let's put a list together and send it to Greg and, uh, who do you want it sent to?
You can send it to Greg and I and we'll get it to Kevin, and we'll work on crafting some language.
And, and copy the board members so they see what's on the list. Can we do that? Hello? Can we do that?
I don't know if they're familiar enough with what you're saying in Red Lodge.
But we are.
Yeah.
So we'll comprise a list, send it to Greg with a copy to the board member. Okay? Okay? All right.
Okay.
Senior Services.
Uh, let's see, need to mention Red Lodge recently lost two assisted living facilities, leaving only one facility in Carvin County. So I think that's. Kevin, I think you can handle that.
Yeah, got that one down.
Yep, so we'll, we'll take care of that one, uh, I don't think that's a big, big deal. Uh, let's see, Carvin County Riot and Transit Program.
I think they got more than three now, don't they?
We.
So that is updated.
Yeah, the comments were. Comments were on this, that there's a third van. Um, and it looks like Kevin's updated that to say three, so I think we're covered.
Yeah, but do they have two vans and what, a bus?
I don't know what you call it, yeah, it's a minibus.
Can we have three vehicles and then we got it covered?
Yeah, three vehicles covered.
Three, three vehicles is.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And it says advanced, like residence with transportation to Billings and Laurel. But if, they also provide transportation around town. Perhaps it should, it, including Red Lodge.
Did Brad or?
Well, it says, it, it says, the project, project currently has three vans that operate on-demand services five days a week for all of Carvin County. And then it says vans provide residents with transportation to Billings and Laurel on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays.
Yeah, so we're gonna change vans to vehicles.
Yeah, so I, I think we're covered.
Okay, this changed already, it's on this Friday.
All right.
Yeah, it's gonna change.
Public facilities and infrastructure, I didn't see. Any comments on that, do you have any, Kevin?
Do you wanna start this, Al, at seven-thirty-ish?
What I'd like to do is finish this tonight if I can, but I don't think.
I don't think we can.
Yeah, we need to stop here, uh, Jeremy, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Stop at public facilities and infrastructure.
All right.
Hopefully we get it done next week, next meeting. Greg, do we have any conditional use coming at us?
No.
So our next meeting's on the thirteenth, Jeremy, Kevin?
That's the date I have.
Huh?
I have the thirteenth as the next.
Of our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you guys, appreciate it.
You're gonna go to the.
And, um. You'll get back to us firm on the, on the nineteenth, uh, with the county planning board. Is that a, an evening meeting or a day meeting, do you know?
Uh, usually there are evening meetings, but I'll verify that with Forrest and I'll let everybody know.
It's an evening meeting, I'm in trouble, cause I teach at night.
They need seven to nine.
Seven to nine?
Or longer.
Or longer. Okay, well, we'll verify that, okay, Jeremy?
Yep, I'll verify everything.
All right.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, staff communication, oh.
Um, going back to the U R D with just having it for here, so in tomorrow's paper, we are actually advertising for two open positions on the Urban Renewal Agency.
Yeah.
There was, um, some activity and some life and reason to believe that those would be successful. That does not mean that anybody else is precluded, so if you know of people that are interested in looking, um, those are, those will be advertised tomorrow.
Okay.
And are there any city council appointees?
Um, I wanna say it's the, the, the next meeting, the time window is set up, like, when they, when they set up the ads, they took that into account. Um, it had to do with when their next meeting is and kind of when it comes up, so it's just.
And what are the qualifications, they have to be a city resident or a county resident or what?
It does state, and I do believe that these have to be in the city. Jeff might be able to speak more correctly, but that's my recollection.
I can't say for sure.
Well, Jeff's our guy, so it can't be one of us.
No, 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 it, it was, it, 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 and he's already on it, so it's not.
Yeah, I'm saying, but, so it won't be any of us, cause we've got Jeff.
Okay, well, and my understanding is that there are interested parties not in this room and not in this table. But again, they're not assigned or given out, it's just, there was a, there was a. We ran it a couple times without any response and we waited to say, we have interested parties. You know, people who show up at meetings and stuff like that.
Okay.
You're shaking.
That, that was all I had.
Staff community, anything else, Greg, update? Our next meeting is November thirteenth?
Yep.
Okay, uh, petitions from the audience? You're a brave man, you come to these, you know, uh.
But we appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate it, so. Any other business? Um. December's getting here pretty quick. Um. I would really like to have a change in leadership. Before I leave for the South. And I leave on the twenty-sixth.
Day after Christmas?
Hmm?
The day after Christmas?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
May I add that the, um, expiration date on the planning board that are posted on the city website are incorrect.
That, and that, that's already been identified, it, the, the webpage got updated. They updated our website and after getting all of that stuff corrected, it has the wrong people, it has the wrong expiration date, it has several issues with it.
Yeah.
So that's already been addressed.
Because this March, we only, there's two coming up, right?
Um, I believe there's actually.
Teresa and Jeff.
Teresa and Jeff, and, and, and Suzanne is still indicating her old date as you are, and that's, I went in and noticed that those were wrong and said.
No, I, my date is like two thousand and ninety.
I'm glad you noticed that.
We, 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 we had updated it and that, and, and, but we're, we're occasionally finding pages that got lost in transition.
My date is.
Already raised.
Two thousand and twenty.
You were rea- you were, yeah, you're in twenty-seven.
We're a three-year term.
You two.
Yeah, yeah. So the two that are up in March are Teresa and Jeff. But I, I can chair this, uh, from a distance, Jeff and I have done it for the last three years. Um, and he sits in here, but I, I, I really. I really want you to think about formalizing it.
We, my, my understanding is from our previous conversations, you were good until March, but, um, if you.
As a member, but I don't.
If you have a des- if you have a desire to, to handle, that's, that's, that's you guys who does that.
Decision here and, and I've, I've talked to members about that, I just want you to think about, I've, this is my fifth year here, I just, in this, no, fourth year, fifth year.
You have to be, you're helping till twenty-ninety.
Yeah. I think it's a discussion we need to have.
That's, that's, and that's an action of the board, so if you guys wanna put them, that's, that's.
And I've mentioned it twice, three times, I'm not gonna mention it again.
But my, just to be fair, when you mentioned it last time, I talked to you afterwards and I understood, maybe I misunderstood, that you said you would be good until March, so.
I'm as a member.
I, I understood as president, so that's okay. I, my correct, my, my understanding has now been updated.
I want this board to think about that and whether you're an effective chair two thousand miles away. I mean, it's kinda worked, but is it effective? Think about it.
Don't, don't look at me, it's not me thinks about it, it's whoever thinks about it.
You know what I'm saying?
Maybe put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda and then we can discuss it.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
I guess, you know, as, as vice chair, I could. Fill that, I mean, that role.
You have for the last four years.
Yeah, unless there's a desire to change that until March.
It's, it's up to you guys, I, I'm just thinking that. It's just a whole lot of files I have to take with me if I. Anyway, okay, enough said, I'm trying to fool around here, all right, are we adjourned?